I hope you're all here for a brief reading of the Odyssey. We'll be starting here shortly. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started, folks. Do I have a motion to exit executive session?
I'll second it.
A motion by Mrs. Hoy, second by Mr. McCall, in favor. All right, do I have a motion to uphold the decision of the tribunal appeal number 230430? Move to uphold the decision of the tribunal with the further conditions and disposition to be amended to allow the suspension to end the last day of the 24-25 school year.
I'll second it.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mr. McCall, all in favor? Unanimous? All right. Well, welcome, everybody. I'll ask you if you're able to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
A dog.
Personnel. All right, we'll do now. All right, do I have a motion to approve personnel? A, 1 through 15, B, 1 through 8, C, 1 through 22?
I make a motion to approve personnel.
Second. A motion by Mrs. Hoy, a second by Mr. Grimes, all in favor? Unanimous? Leave it to me to skip an item on the agenda? Nobody knew, but I told them myself, no. All right, guys, welcome. We have a busy night. Thank you all for being here. The first thing on our agenda today is recognitions with Mr. Hershey.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We are excited. My name is Derek Hershey, and I'm the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources. And I am a feeling for tonight to be able to do recognitions, which I love. I would take this all day long. And to start with today, we are going to be presenting an administrative leadership award for Bob Conneroli, principal at North Forsyth High School. And here to present this award is Ms. Catherine Kieser. She's gonna tell you a little more about it.
Thank you. As a longtime member of the Georgia Music Educators Association and a parent of a fine arts North Forsyth graduate, it is my great honor to present this recognition tonight. The GMEA Administrator of the Year Award recognizes administrators who are professionally active in Georgia education and support music education in their school or system. The following was presented at our state conference by our president. Our work as music educators is so much easier and effective with the support of outstanding administrators who recognize the importance of music education and the lifelong impact it makes in the lives of our students. The GMEA Administrative Leadership Award is presented today to a high school principal who goes above and beyond to not only support the music programs in his school, but to truly advocate for them as well. One letter of support described him as "a true champion of the arts." You will see him at all band and choral concerts, marching band and drumline performances, theater productions and art shows. Another teacher commented, "By the time he makes it to one of our events, it is likely that he just left another music event or game, and that could have been right down the road or hundreds of miles away." Absolute truth. But maybe the greatest support came in the letter from a former student who said, "No one is a better example of what it means to support music education, and I firmly believe the support he has shown to the music program will grow the future of music education. I will never forget the impact of my high school principal had on my music education." With 30 years of supporting music education and the Forsyth County school system, I am very honored to present the 2025 GMEA Administrator Leadership Award to the principal of North Forsyth High School, Mr. Bob Conneroli.
Our cheer team from North Forsyth High School. So if we could have our competition cheer team from north, please come on up. That's all right, we're gonna do this backwards. You guys are good. Come on this way first, and then I'm gonna say something nice about you. You guys got a lot of medals going on here, yeah. I think they're proud. We're gonna, let me say just a few things. First of all, Coach Jessica Wood, are you here? You're right there, awesome. Coach Wood, we are so proud of you for leading your competition cheer for back-to-back GHSA state champions in the competition cheer team. Congratulations, North Forsyth Raiders. Great job. Great job, Lady Raiders. And if we have any school personnel, family, friends that came to support our Lady Raiders, would you please stand so we can recognize you as well? Thank you. All right, next, from East Forsyth High School, Jackson Moth, Jackson. And head coach Jeremiah Walker, is Coach Walker here? Come on. Congratulations to Jackson for earning the 4A GHSA state champion wrestler in the 175-pound category. Congratulations. I don't think I would try to take you down. Great job to you and to Coach Walker. Great job, guys. Great job. Any family, friends, school personnel that are here to support Jackson, would you please stand so we can recognize you? Great job, guys. Also, from East Forsyth High School senior Emmanuel Pitts, his dad, Mr. Pitts, will accept the award today for him. If you wouldn't mind coming forward, please. And head coach Tyler Martin, is Coach Martin here? Ty, you could, you're a Martin, you can, you can get in there. All right. Emmanuel Pitts, senior dad, accepting the award for Emmanuel was the 4A GHSA state champion diver. That is amazing. Great job to you. Congratulations, sir. You're gonna go shake it. Hey, great job. I think our East crew is over here. East family, friends, let's give it up. This must be an East party today because now we are here to recognize the East Forsyth High School Esports Team. Please come forward. And Coach Justin Hodges, head coach, come on up. All right, East Forsyth High School was the AAA slash 4A GHSA state champions for the fall '24 coached by Justin Hodges' head coach. Congratulations to you guys. Great job. Great job, guys. Yeah, great job. Great job, great job. Families, friends, and those from East Forsyth High School again, can we give you guys a big round of applause? Great job. All right, I think she's kinda nervous right now. I can sense this, but we're gonna ask Ms. Penny Major to come on up. Come on up. I've seen, I kinda saw her a little bit nervous here, and I said, "I'm gonna try to make this easy," but I don't really want to because we were in Ignology. So this is a really big deal. Our Employee of the Month program, who is sponsored by Jim &amp; Nick's Barbecue, Dorset Hospital, Community Cup, Cummings Family Chiropractor, Freedom Mill, State Farm, MDSI, and Peach Skin Sheets, is proud to announce the March 2025 Employee of the Month Specialized in Food Nutrition Services, Penny Major. Let's give her a big round of applause. Now, because Penny wasn't nervous enough, I'm gonna just make her stand here while I talk about her for a second. Here's some great things that were said about Penny. Penny works in our cafe and is an absolute ray of sunshine. She treats our students and staff like family and exemplifies our Avenger way at Alliance. She truly is an asset to our school. Another said, "It is such a great way to start the day with a good morning from Penny. She has a true passion for her work and the students in which she serves. With 10 years of dedication in food service, Penny is absolutely deserving of this award. She has an amazing positive attitude, and she always greets students with a smile and conversation." She is, of course, our cheerleader. She loves to cheer folks up, but she is much more than that. Thank you so much, Penny, for all you do. Yeah, when you're the employee of the month, you get, you get a pretty big basket these days. Great job. And do we have any friends, family, staff members that might be here to support Penny? I have a feeling. Let's give it up, yep. Well, also, this, this last week was a special week for us. It was Board Appreciation Month. And I wish some of you could see some of the gifts and how much our school staff took really good care of you guys to show how much we appreciate you. But we wanted to say thank you and recognize each one of you. I don't know how you're gonna go and shake each other's hands. That would be a little awkward, but we do want to be able to say, oh, Suzie and you, okay, in District 1, Wes McCall. From District 2, Tricia Hoyes. From District 3, Dorian Usherwood. From District 4, Chris Grimes. In District 5, Mike Valdez. I know that you guys know this, they might not, but you guys don't get paid a whole lot of money for many hours that you put into this, and we just wanted to say thank you for all you do. We truly appreciate you. So let's give one more round of applause. At this time, I'm gonna bring up our, for our alumni highlight, Dr. Michelle Duke.
We should look into some walk-up songs. See if we can get some good ones. We'll ask East, they're doing great. Well, I have the pleasure to share a little bit about our alumni and where they go off to do great and impressive and wonderful things in the world. And so we have a video to share with you today, and this is one video that's in a series. So our initial video was a teacher, Ms. Hope Cleveland, at Silver City Elementary who returned home to teach. Our second alumni spotlight video was Dusty Benefield, so he graduated from North Forsyth High School a long time ago, and he came back to be an entrepreneur and a businessman in our community and give back to a lot of mentoring and support in our schools. And then today, we are going somewhere very exciting. Today, we are gonna take a trip to a place where the drinks are refreshing and the onions bloom, and I'm talking about a little place called Outback Steakhouse.
Wow. Very clever.
So I'm really excited to present our alumni spotlight. How many of you been to the Outback in Cummings? Okay, so you know what I'm talking about. What's really exciting is when you look at the name of the proprietor of the Managing Business Partner, that's above the doors as you walk in, it says Alexa Antonini. And Alexa is a graduate at Forsyth County Schools. In fact, she is a graduate of West Forsyth High School, and she is in the class of 2016. So I'm gonna, oh, yeah. So I will share a video to tell a little bit more about her story right now.
My name is Alexa Antonini, and I graduated from West Forsyth High School in 2016. I am currently the managing partner at the Outback Steakhouse in Cummings, Georgia. So I actually did not go to college. Actually, I take that back. I went to college for two semesters, and it was just not the route for me. I started at this job when I was 16. I was still a sophomore at West Forsyth. I was waiting for every age requirement to move positions because I started right at 16, and each position has an age requirement. So as soon as I turned 17, I was like, "Get me something else. Like, I'm tired of hosting," you know? So I just kept bouncing up, and then it finally took me into the management role, and again, just trying to make the most of where I was at in life, and that was here. So I took it. A lot of organization kind of thought back to my teachers and how patient that they had to be with all different kinds of personalities. So definitely took a lot of respect from that, 100%, but just kind of in the patience aspect, knowing that other, I have kids that work here and students, and they play sports, and they're in AP classes and things like that. So I am also very aware, yes, that they do have a lot going on. So modifying their schedule to what best fits, I tell them every single day, just because I didn't take the college rap doesn't mean school is not important. So I hone in on that for them very, very intently. Obviously, organization, but the time aspect of things and just knowing that there are things to prioritize, whether it be, again, going back to school and like projects, that's a priority over homework or things like that. It allowed me to kind of break down, like, hey, like mentally compartmentalize everything that I had to do. So I guess that's where the organization piece does come in as well. I don't think I had the best attitude in school at the time. I'm not even gonna try to fib about that. I had teachers that I looked up to. I want to be that person for somebody else, trying to be the most positive, the most patient with those. Because I do, again, I have a lot of students that are here, so they go to all different schools around the county. So I think being that role model for them in the best way possible, but also holding them accountable for things that are in their job description, or even if they're like, "Hey, I do have homework. I have, okay, get out of here, go. Like, what are you doing?" Like, you know, stuff like that. So using teachers as a good example for that, just being more gracious with students, or I guess my employees, but their students. I don't know if this is gonna be allowed to say, but put the phone down, put the phone down and communicate with people in front of you. That is probably the best thing. I was very shy starting this role. I, I mean, I was 16, had my phone all the time, all of that, and I was already naturally very shy. So being here and in this job for as long as I have at this point, coming up on 11 years, it has forced me to be more aware of my surroundings and actually engage with the people that are standing side by side with me, and even people that I don't know, and just communicating with them, communication. So there were always a couple of teachers that I did have. They were more prominent in my sophomore and junior year. They might not have realized how much of an impact that they did have on me and that little bit of a push that I did need. I still think about them. I actually thought about them on my way here today. One of them I know is still in the school system. His name is Mr. Moore. He was at West Forsyth. But again, he, he just had that gentle touch and just seemed so genuine that, I don't wanna cry. It made me more appreciative for the teachers that I did have, and I look back on that, and I'm like, "Wow, okay. I'm here today because I had that little nudge that I needed early on." So, okay.
And so that is just such an exciting success story when we think about where she started as a hostess, working her way up, and now her, her name is on that door, which is really exciting. We are so proud of Alexa Antonini. And in the grand spirit of entrepreneur, I have catering menus for you all to share for Outback Steakhouse. But we are very proud. And juniors and seniors, I would love to tell your stories. And so contact me, I'll reach out to you all, but I would love to see you up here as well. Thank you.
All right. What a great story. Thank you. At this time, we are here to introduce Dr. Ashley Johnacy from Hawk Creek Elementary School for the Superior Spotlight. Welcome, Dr. Johnacy.
Our superintendent, who is now Dr. Young, am I close enough? Is this working? Congratulations, sir. Very accomplished. And Ms. Mayo, of course, who makes this all work. I am Ashley Johnacy, and I have the distinct honor and pleasure of serving as principal at Hawk Creek Elementary School. Tonight, I'm gonna tell you about a program that I'm so proud of, and I have with me today Ms. Tasha Breunig. Will you stand? Who not only is our business manager, classroom teacher, but also is our Teacher of the Year at Hawk Creek. And also, Mr. Hayes was able to join us tonight. You can come up if you'd like. And he is one of our students in Ms. Breunig's class. And you can tell, this is not a full classroom, so not everyone was able to make it tonight. So the students have made a video to talk to you a little bit about their experience. But before I introduce the video, I want to tell you why what these students and what this teacher do make our school safe, connected, and thriving. Our school is a safe place where students and teachers can run a business. And I think that's pretty impressive because, I don't know if you remember, I'm an elementary principal. So Ms. Breunig said, "Hey, it's nice to meet you." And I said, "Hey, why don't we start a business?" And she's like, "Who are you?" This was about two and a half years ago. But since then, the students, along with Ms. Breunig, have not only had the opportunity to test drive various recipes, as Maggie is here to attest to you tonight, she is a good test food marketer. They not only create their recipes, but they've had some that have been challenges. We've had to go back and start over. In addition to that, they outgrew their space very quickly. Where are we going to be able to cook enough dog treats to sell to actually make an impact? So with the support of food nutrition, our students are able to utilize a commercial kitchen here in our district in order for them to go practicing the skills that they're learning in math and science to bake those dog treats. But even more than that, they've made a safe environment for people to say, "Hey, I wanna be a part of that," with our peer buddies who go and assist them and help them with that process. So together, they create a safe place for students to come together, which brings me to connection. So not only are they connecting with one another and other students in our building, but everyone in our school knows about Husky Pack Treats. I'll tell you that on, it was Monday, I had a student who was principal for the day, and she came with me, and we were walking down the hallway, and she recognized their business cart. So our kids know about it. Our business partners in the community, such as West Forsyth Animal Hospital, as well as Pet Supplies Plus of South Forsyth, have also carried their product to help us gain greater market interest. I mean, we're talking about students and entrepreneurs who are connecting with business partners so that they can make money. But what are they going to use that money for? They're connecting that to causes that mean a lot to them. One of the things that they've donated to is the Forsyth County Humane Society. That was their first donation. Recently, they have been generating funds for an inclusive playground adaption to our school. And then most recently, they were touched by the cause of the wildfires in California. And so they've donated funds to go and help with all three of those causes. And I'm not done because we haven't gotten to thriving yet. This work that they're doing is so impactful to our community that parent partners, our PTO and, and private donors have all helped to get behind our playground. And so they are going to be a part of our grand unveiling, which we would like to invite all of you to in summer of '25, date to be announced, where we are going to be implementing the change that they saw for our school and creating an inclusive playground area where all of our students are able to connect, no matter if they have wheelchairs, walkers, or other sort of assistive mobility. But it wouldn't be my story to tell. They insisted that they be able to tell you their story. Unfortunately, we knew we would have a scheduling challenge, so in true inclusive spirit, these students created a video to tell you a little bit about Husky Pack Treats and how it's impacted them.
We make dog treats. We are its friends. Bird for work, and then we learn a lot.
We learn how to be respectful. We learn to talk to people in our community. We also work hard, win, and earn things.
Kids, we get better at. We have improved our math skills. We are improving our work seminar. We make commercials to talk to customers to work on communication skills.
How does this help us? We can use these skills when we grow up. We feel like we have a purpose.
We make money from selling our dogs. We make a better bird. We're all good at marketing.
We help animals too. We give money to the humane society. We also waste money to help animals caught by wildfires.
Why our brother values? We show that they can make a difference. We feel proud of our hard work. Our school is proud of us. We also get a triumph from our therapy class.
We work together. We work as a team. We teach our pure bodies. We help each other.
Our favorite part, making treats fun. We are seeing happy guys eat our treats.
We enjoy cooking and making deliveries.
Us don't forget your father's name here.
Yes. If it's okay. No, I was just gonna say Hayes brought some treats for you so that if you guys have dogs, if you have family members that have dogs, he wants to share with you. So if you wanna go ahead and get your treats. And don't forget, you can follow them on Instagram and also purchase your own dog treats in the future. Shameless plug. Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight.
Hayes, can I ask you a question? So what is your favorite part? Is it making the treats? Is it selling the treats? Or is it feeding the treats to the dogs? What's your favorite part? Making the treats? All right, how many do you think you make it, like, in a, in a day? How many treats can you make? Like in a, in a day, how many treats can you make? Yeah, five? All right. Great. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
So Mr. McCall has a giant dog.
Yeah, so this, I have a Great Dane Lena. And so I'll go home and feed this to Lena tonight. Oh, the baby ones, yeah, she'll swallow those up. And then I'll send you guys a video night of me giving this to Lena.
Please do.
That would be good.
I have two mini Schnauzer, so I need the small ones. Because they eat everything, so.
Perfect.
Aw, thank you. No.
As he passes those out, I just have to tell you, working in a district where this is a possibility, sorry, in a rough 24 hours, is just the best part of this job. So when you wonder, what do you show up for? Because we know it's not the paycheck. These kids are going to be your workforce. They are going to change the world. And I have the absolute pleasure of working with them every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Love you.
All right. Well, that's hard to follow. So I am going to take a moment of privilege here and recognize a couple of additional things. So we have a Boy Scout in the room who's earning a merit badge. If you can stand up for us. And finally, I want to recognize, um, our very own Dr. James Mitchell Young, who last week successfully defended his dissertation and is now added to the ranks of doctors here in the South Forsyth. I just want you to know that you don't get a raise for that, Mitch, but.
Do I get additional mic time? Does that come with?
You can say a few words.
I actually had to move over to make more room.
All right. We appreciate you guys coming out. We're going to take a short recess before we get into the business portion. I promise you, the consent agenda is riveting if you want to stay. Otherwise, this would be a good moment for you to make for the hills. Thank you, guys, for coming out.
A strange one for anybody. It's one that we're focused on very frequently. Mr. Young challenges all forty-three of our schools and all of our leaders within it to use this, our North Star, to kind of guide our work so that we're consistent across the district in our efforts to develop leaders at all levels. First and foremost, just trying to touch and base on some of the data behind the need for us to have leadership development programs in our community. First, you know, looking back, in recent years, we've seen an increased need for new leaders due to retirements, advancement to district leadership positions, as well as growth and reorganization. There are currently forty-three principals and a hundred and eight assistant principals in our school district. That equates to a hundred and fifty-one school-based leaders. Kind of looking back the past few years, looking at just the past three years, we have twenty-two out of forty-three principals that are new in their role. We also have fifty-two out of a hundred and eight assistant principals new to their role. So the number on that is seventy-four out of a hundred and fifty-one are new in the last few years. Now, obviously, there's a need to not just have great leaders in our schools, but to be sure that we're continuing to develop those people and support them as they go into that work because, as you know, the last three years are primarily post-pandemic and there are different challenges than there were many, many years ago in school leadership. Also, looking ahead at the need for continued efforts to develop and maintain leaders in our community, looking at potential school-based needs and potential district-based needs. Mr. Hershey in Human Resources worked with his team to kind of do a gauge of potential openings in coming years. And in the next five years, and this, of course, is a hypothetical number because some people may choose, is where in the Forbes list are great places to work. Some people may work indefinitely, but talking about looking at state retirements and when people could retire, there are currently in the next five years fifty-eight principals or assistant principals that could retire. And in that same time span, there are currently twenty-two district-level administrators that could retire. So that's a potential need for up to eighty leaders coming forth in the in the next five years if people retire when they could. And once again, they may choose not to, but if they do, that need is obviously there. Looking at our leadership development, there are currently a multitude of programs in place for the efforts, not just to build the principals. We talked about the need to fill those positions in the assistant principals in recent years, but also looking ahead and trying to develop leaders at all levels, not just leaders, not just principals. I think many times people think about leadership, they say principals, and that's obviously one of the most visible leadership positions, but there's an array of efforts to develop leaders at all levels. And I'd like to talk briefly about about the leader development programs here on the screen. First and foremost, aspiring principals. This originated in two thousand and eighteen. I'd like to say I'm a very proud graduate of the first cohort of aspiring principals. It's a great program. It is designed for people that have been assistant principals for three years or longer. They have to apply to go to this. They have to receive recommendation from their current supervisor, as well as interview with a committee that is put forth by the leadership development team to select people that meet certain criteria or that are viewed as, definitely people view as potential school leaders in the coming years. This runs March to November, and it culminates each year about the time that principal interviews come to place. It's designed so that each year, if there are new principal openings at any schools in our community, people that are in the current cohort, for example, have an opportunity to interview for those. Once again, there have, or since two thousand and eighteen, thirty-five people that have gone through aspiring principals have received a promotion since two thousand and eighteen. And it's already, pardon me, the application process for this next school year has already taken place and the program has started, and there are seven people currently in the program for aspiring principals for this coming year. Looking at our lead academy, now it says in parentheses, began in two thousand and twenty-three. I do want to clarify that that is when the program became a Forsyth County program. Prior to that, we had outside groups that did that work from some other organizations that kind of led the professional learning. And for a variety of reasons, the decision was made to make it a Forsyth County program, much of that so that people learn the Forsyth way and develop as leaders in a manner that we believe is most important for our schools. However, it's very similar currently to what was done before in terms of structure, but the content is more Forsyth-based. With that said, since two thousand and twenty-two, which I know that predates our current program, but once again, it's a similar approach that we've had. A hundred and three aspiring leaders have gone through and have completed one facet of the program or the other. These are anywhere from teacher leaders to assistant administrators or others that are designated for potential leadership opportunities, maybe not always principal, but other leaders in the building, maybe assistant principals, maybe a variety of leadership things that could take place. And that's designed to essentially work with people to develop leadership skills that help them be just essentially better leaders. Looking at our lead counselor program, that is something that began this year. There are currently fourteen individuals in that. The need kind of went about that there was people going into lead counseling roles that had not received any formal leadership training. So looking at how we can train these people to be more consistent, to be sure that they're leading and not just counseling, because while counseling is a huge piece of that, the lead counselor has to lead the counseling department. So the efforts to go around that began this school year, and that needs something that's probably going to remain consistent in future years with coming and going and being sure we're developing leaders to be the best they can be. Looking at several more, A2A, now that means aspiring to actual. People that go through aspiring principals may sometimes be assistant principals for another year or two. They may not, but when they become principals, this is essentially a crash course that is an intense multi-session workshop that takes place over the span of two to three meetings soon after someone is named as a principal, to really do a deep dive into their core values, into their why they want to be a principal, into developing ideas for their rollout into their building, their be sure they get off to a great start. And then there are follow-up meetings throughout the spring and summer to be sure that they have the ongoing support that they need. This is often done in a cohort. I can tell you that I have the good privilege of leading this piece of this, and Mr. Hershey supports me in that. And with that, there's a cohort. This year, we currently have three brand-new principals that are named for next school year. And these are three people that we sit down, do some deep dive with, and they have one another to trade ideas and to bounce ideas off one another. And, you know, according to how many principal jobs there are each year, depending on how many people are in this, but it truly is a personalized deep dive just to be sure that they get off to a great start, and that's the purpose of that. S2S or school-to-school, this is something that Mr. Hershey leads, and I work to support him in that, but this comes down to leaders that are already principals, but they're going to another school to be a principal. And this year, we have two examples of that with Ms. Moody and Ms. McAllister going from schools that they currently lead to another school in our district, just to be sure that they are going through in a manner that transitions, that they leave well, that we don't leave things, there are other schools where there's gaps, so that the students there continue to receive great support, and the teachers there continue to have great leadership, as well as being sure they get off to a great start at their new school and, you know, just have a great school, a great experience at their new school with the teachers there and the students there, and kind of let them become entrenched in that new school environment throughout the spring. Looking at a couple of others, DLO, which is our district leader onboarding. This was actually Mr. Young's dissertation. Y'all mentioned a minute ago that he was a doctor now, so Dr. Young, excuse me, it was actually Dr. Young's dissertation. With that, there have been in recent years forty-two of our eighty-three district leaders are new in the past three years, and there was not any, let me check that. I don't want to tell you wrong. Yeah, in the past three years, there was no previous program to help them transition to district levels. So when you come in, even though you might be a school leader, most of the leaders there at the school leader, you kind of are, it's almost a micro-focus. You're looking at the school. When you get to be a district leader, you have to look more macro, more widespread, how decisions have real deal effects, how things are at different schools, different communities, what different needs are. And this is designed to bring people into district leadership in a more successful manner and to be sure that we have a district lens to support teachers and leaders throughout our building. And Dr. Young, anything you'd like to add to that? Is it was your dissertation, sir? All right. Looking down, we have Class A leadership. This is something that is conducted for our classified personnel. If it's someone that is in any facet of classified leadership, they can go through this to learn leadership skills, so they go back and lead in their own buildings. I can tell you, as a former principal, I was always very pleased when we would have people go through this. We had our lead custodian, our cafeteria manager. We had our, several of our secretaries and administrative assistants go through. They would come back with a different lens of how they interacted with others, how they interact with our community and our parents, how they might, how they might frame some of our custodial meetings, for example. I really felt like that this was something that was invaluable, and in our efforts to be sure we're developing leaders at all levels in our district, this is a place where we're taking care, you know, being sure everybody has opportunities to grow and develop. One that we're really proud of, last on the list that hasn't started yet, Nathan Turner, who I believe is here tonight, has been working really hard to put this together. We currently in our district have seven traditional high school athletic directors, and that's not even taken into account our middle school ADs. If we look at that same next five-year window I mentioned a while ago for potential needs, we potentially could need seven athletic directors in the next five years. Once again, those guys that are currently ADs, they may work forever, but they could go home in the next five years. And if they do, there's not currently anything in place to be sure that we're training other ADs to do all the various things that are required per the Georgia High School Association, and quite frankly, meet the important demands in our community, ensure board compliance, eligibility down the line. There's no training program for that. So Nathan's been putting a lot of work into that, and we plan actually to roll this out this coming, later in the spring for applicants and have a similar approach. It's being designed in the same vein of aspiring principals and some that you have to apply, you'll have to interview. We want to select people that certainly their current principals see as potential future athletic directors, because if we're going to use district resources and we're going to use district time to pour into someone, we want to be sure that it's somebody that is going to get something out of it, that it's going to be beneficial to them and justifies them being away from their current job for training. Looking ahead, we currently have, excuse me, a leadership development team. Now, this team, if you look at it, you'll see what we call the Forty-Niners, people that had previously had a variety of leadership roles in our community, and they work forty-nine percent of the time, which is what's allowed per the teacher, Georgia teacher retirement system. With those, you have, and I'll go just briefly over what these folks are involved in to help clarify that. I know there's some questions about that came my way. First and foremost, Jeff Bearden oversees the Forty-Niner, the leadership development team, and works under my supervision to do that. He is leading, he is leading and will continue, and the plan is for him to lead our DLO program in the coming year for district onboarding. He also works with, he's working now with Dr. Bartlett and myself to finalize our principal evaluation adjustments for accountability as we come forth in this next school year, and be sure that, and he'll be involved with the teacher evaluation plans. Additionally, he's working right now to support Nathan, because many don't know this, but Dr. Bearden is a former coach and athletic director. He's working to support Nathan in the development of that, to be sure that we'll be consistent with our other leader development programs. Sherri Black is a former principal in our district. She works with aspiring principals. She's the one that essentially drives the train on that. She coaches our new assistant principals and principals with monthly meetings, and she also works to support our Year Two and our Year Three principals with meetings that go through each semester for them to come in, because I can tell you as a former principal, Year Two and Year Three are eye-opening because things that you thought you learned, when you see what it's really like when you're sitting in the seat, you need additional support, you need additional guidance, and Sherri does a great job navigating some of that. Terry North, y'all know she's a former principal. I believe she opened four schools as the first principal in our community. That's, I've never even heard of anybody doing that before. And Terry's a remarkable leader. She also coaches new principals, new assistant principals. She conducts all of our Lead Academy efforts to develop the aspiring leaders that go through the Lead Academy and other programs that are similar. And then Joey Perkel, Joey is a former deputy superintendent. He conducts our Class A leadership, which he played a huge role in designing that. He's also involved with aspiring principals, has monthly coaching sessions with new principals, as Sherri does as well. And Joey also is working to, pardon me, working with Nathan as he was part of the group that started aspiring principals, to be sure the aspiring AD effort is aligned to that same startup rollout, because we do want it to be sustainable and there for the long haul. And last, but most certainly not least, Cindy Salome. Cindy's largest role with leader development is regarding our experienced principals. She's had a variety of seats in our district from associate superintendent. She's a former principal and was, worked in TNL for a long time. And Cindy is a great resource for experienced principals, just for, hey, you know, need somebody to bounce ideas off of. She does meet with them in a scheduled manner. And I think we all know that she also is our legal advisor in-house and works to deal with that, and that's outside of her work with leader development. I wanted to show this. This effort was put together by our human resource department, but it's called the Career Development Lattice, and it's kind of in alignment with our leader development programs. If you look at the start, essentially wherever you currently land in our district as an employee, there are efforts and leadership development programs that will help guide you to other positions within the district. If you so happen to be the best in the district that's most deserving or the best in your current job, you have a good chance to move on to your next job. But there's training and so forth that goes with that. Just because you're a great teacher doesn't mean you have the, you might have the drive, the desire, the knack, but you don't have the training to be an administrator and down the line. And you can see that from all the way from our classified positions on the far left over to district positions and school-based leadership on the right. And I certainly, for the sake of time, and won't read this to you, but it's all intertwined with leader development programs in place to help support people as they go through the proposed chains and/or pathway of leadership in our community. And with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Low.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Next up is Mr. Larry Hamel with the Finance Report.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to discuss the February twenty twenty-five finance report. As always, we keep goal three in mind when we talk about the budget process and the budget. So we start the month off with three hundred and nine million dollars in cash, ended the month with two hundred and eighty-eight. This time last year, we had about two hundred and sixty-seven million dollars in cash. Both the revenue and disbursement are normal for this time of the year. On the revenue side, a couple of things to point out. We're at eighty-point-seven-seven. We're a little bit behind last year at eighty-two-point-two-three. One of the areas we seem to be falling behind on is the title of alarm tax. It's a little bit behind schedule, but we are ahead of schedule on the avulorm tax, tangible real estate tax, and then tangible tax. And QB is following right along where it needs to be. Everything else looks normal. On the expenses, we're at sixty-six-point-eight-one. This time last year, we're at sixty-five-point-five, so we're a little bit ahead of schedule in expenditures, but everything looks normal for this time of the year. On debt service, cash analysis, this time last year, we had about four-point-seven-million dollars in our debt service account. As you can see, we have about four hundred K. And again, we lowered the mortgage rate two years ago, and we put reserves in general fund, so those reserves in general fund are making it part of the payments during the years as we go forward. SPOLOX six is at eighteen-point-five. We had forty-six million dollars. And of course, SPOLOX six was the last year that made a big drop towards the debt service payments back in February of this year. On special revenue funds, we're on par where we need to be with that. Capital projects, we ended the month with twenty-eight million dollars. This time last year, we had fifteen. School food services, excuse me, school food services. You can see that the revenue is a little bit low compared to the expenses. Fund balance dropped to nineteen-point-six. This time last year, we're at twenty-two-point-two. On investment summary, currently, we have two hundred and almost eleven million dollars in an investment fund. We had about a hundred and ninety-three last year, and all the other funds are lower than they were last year. Total, we had about two hundred and sixty-nine million dollars last year compared to two forty-five this year. The collections were a little bit low at four-point-eight, but if you look back historically, you'll see back in February of twenty-four, it was four-point-six. And again, in February of twenty-three, it was four-point-three. So in terms of what the collections were in the previous February, it is above schedule, but typically February is a low month collection-wise. At the elementary school level, we had five million dollars in the bank accounts with the schools. We had about five-point-one this time last year. The middle schools were about two-point-four. We have exactly almost the same amount we did last year. And the high schools ended the month with about seven million, and we were at six-point-nine last year. In terms of percentages, they pretty much stay the same overall, and overall, the cash balances of schools is almost identical to what it was last year. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Next up is SPOLOX accomplishments with Mr. Matt Wark and Dr. Michelle Dugan.
Good evening again. Excited to be here with my best friend, Matt Wark. The Eminem Show is bringing you another SPOLOX spotlight. And before Matt talks about the incredible job that his team did partnering alongside, I'd like to invite Principal Daphne Rogers out. So when I was sharing with her that we were going to, yeah, come on down. You don't win anything other than a presentation. But Ms. Rogers was so excited when I shared that we would be highlighting the Midway Building and the SPOLOX project, that she just wanted to share and express her thanks and gratitude, and I invited her to do that at this time.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. We truly just wanted to take a moment to extend a heartfelt thank you to the board and also to our community members who voted for SPOLOX. We really wanted to thank the board for their visionary leadership and forward thinking in making our beautiful state-of-the-art school come to reality and fruition. We also want to say a sincere thank you to our local voters. We really appreciate how they prioritized SPOLOX and ensuring that our school system continues to thrive, and it's really gonna take a great place for our current and future generations to come. The new school building actually represents excitement for the future, providing both a safe and innovative space that our students and community deserving certainly can be proud of. One of the things that we talked about with our team, we talked about how in addition to supporting our students, it's also really becoming a community hub. We've had an opportunity to welcome in the technology fair. We're looking forward to sponsoring a math, a national math competition there soon. So as it's being a community hub, we are looking forward to continuing to invite families and supporters so that we can continue to build strong community connections and showcase the incredible work of both our students and our staff members. So again, thank you so much for supporting us. We really appreciate it, and thank you, Mr. Wark.
Daphne, stay here for just a moment. I'm just going to show some highlights really quickly. Of course, we know that these are aligned to our strategic plan and governance goals, giving students the wonderful, innovative place to learn, great buildings that invite our communities in. But with our spotlight, I do want to tell you that we invited a lot of our, our community partners, our news organizations into the grand opening of Midway Elementary, and I know many of you were there. This was such a fantastic event. It just showed the love for such a traditional classic school that got reimagined a little bit with a new building and well-deserved space for students to learn. But you see the littlest learners there with Ms. Rogers ready to welcome new folks, and that was just such an incredible, incredible experience where I think genuinely it is probably the largest grand opening I've been a part of. It was packed wall-to-wall, again, just to show that community connection and how important it was. You have your kindergartners walking in on the first day, so we also went on the first day. Classrooms were ready for those learners. So at this time, we'll show you the video, and then I'll hand it over to Mr. Wark.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here again to highlight one of our great SPOLOX projects. We're very proud of everything we do with our SPOLOX dollars. It's great to see that going in our community. Real quick, you saw some of the highlights on SPOLOX. This was a very unique school that we built. Architect was Lindsey Pope Brayfield, who built Pools Mill a couple of years prior, so they're very familiar. Carol Daniel Construction built Pools Mill as well, so it was nice to have the same team come in. We were able to use them effectively. But also, Carol Daniel made it a big tribute because it was their big anniversary. They built the school, the original, in nineteen sixty-one. So they were very aggressive to come after this job. They were, Brian Daniel, the owner himself, was very proud of getting this job. They did, they did a great job, and it's great to have that same partnership when we get consistency. Some of the other highlights, one, before I go into details of the school, it's great to have a partnership with the community, which we did with the old Midway. Now, we're able to partner with our Sheriff's Department to use that facility. So having that there is also another benefit of able to build a new school. The other piece was, as you saw, that we did finish early again. I want to continuously brag on my construction team, Tom Winning and Casey Rose. They really drive construction, but it also goes back into design. If the design is not done accurately, then delays happen. We always work collectively between my department and our contractors and architects. Things get done. This one, actually, Daphne and I laughed about this. It got done so early that we had to send extra custodians there because it was sitting, waiting for students in the fall. So I guess that's a really good thing, problem to have. So we're very proud that that finished early again. And another one, those of you that are in the industry, less than one percent, not even less than a half a percent for change orders, that's because, one, it goes back to the design of it, to make sure there's no misses, but also making sure our people, our construction team on the ground is making sure that people are not trying to do things and take advantage of a school system. That's why we select great contractors in the beginning, but holding them accountable, they actually do appreciate. So for a thirty-plus-million-dollar project to have less than that as a change order is not very normal. Real quick comparison, the original Midway sat on nine-point-eight acres. This one sits on twenty-two. The square footage of the original was sixty-eight thousand. This one is one hundred and thirty-six thousand. The student capacity was only seven hundred at the old one, and the new allows eleven-hundred-and-seventy-five, which is a massive increase, but we're so excited because it stayed in the Midway community, which was, it's also not very normal when we have to go find property, that we were able to find that in the Midway community, which allowed every Midway student to stay at Midway, which was very exciting. I think the, that showed in the open house, to be honest with you. I think a lot of that community loved having a new school on the same road as their old one, and everything just kind of flowed. I've never seen an open house flow into the high school parking lot football field. So the people were walking forever. So it was a great project overall, but I do want to thank the board again for allowing us to use those SPOLOX dollars for that. I want to thank the voters of Forsyth County because this I want to thank the voters of Forsyth County because this was a great project, well deserved, well needed, and it works with our strategic plan and our future planning to have space and not use the modular units. We did it at the right time and it's a beautiful place to be, as, as Daphne mentioned. Questions about Midway?
How much was Midway, excuse me, how much was Midway to build? Like 30?
I want to say 34 to 36, but don't.
And how, and how much debt did we go into to build that school?
Great point. He loves to bring this up and I don't say anything because I want you to ask me. Zero, we paid as we go, no loans, no debt. We paid with Sploost dollars coming in every month.
And that's our second school that we've done that with.
Yes. And Lakeside Edition, Mashburn Edition, a full new Midway.
All debt free.
Absolutely, all debt free.
Yeah, I think this particular example is kind of the poster child for the power of the Sploost program, where we're able to operate debt-free, respond to growth without incurring additional debt that the taxpayer ends up paying twice what, what we borrow. But also that we were able to take an old building and to basically give it to our Sheriff's Department and now we're increasing our school safety footprint and that collaboration. So that, that's the power of Sploost. It opens up these options and this is probably the, the best example of it. Plus, the open house was fantastic. There were so many people there, I couldn't believe it. So beautiful building, good job.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dugan. All right, that brings us to our action items and we have one on the agenda with Dr. Josh Low again. Alliance Academy for Innovation Updates. You can clap for him, it's okay.
Appreciate that, the support. You ask for information and you shall receive. All right, guys, on a serious note, last week I presented basically the history and information about the current design of Alliance and I was asked to come back with some proposed adjustments for athletic participation. So without further ado, the governance goals tied to this presentation are social, social and emotional health, the learner profile, as well as culture, climate and community. A quick review, and I won't read it again, but Alliance was designed as a career development, our career pathways and development-based school. They came about with a variety of stakeholders in our community and it was originally funded through the Public Facilities Authority. As I shared last week, the current design is for students to work diligently to establish a strong, a strong sense of community, proud to be Avengers and offer many clubs and even athletic-related events for participation at the school. Students are accepted through a lottery process and the past three years' numbers are listed as they were shared last week. The Georgia High School Association, a quick review, once again, when Alliance opened its doors, at that time, students were not allowed per the GHSA to participate in what is called specialty schools at the base school that they would ordinarily attend. But since that time, it has been amended and by law 1.62N states, if approved by the local Board of Education, students enrolled in a magnet or specialty school established by the local Board of Education shall be allowed to participate in GHSA extracurricular activities as a member of the school team for the school they, they, school which they would ordinarily attend according to local Board of Education attendance policies. And as we previously discussed, the GHSA now allows homeschool students and there are 13 in this district. I'd like to say, looking at the proposed design that I was asked to bring, I'd like to thank Nathan Turner for his work to help do some homework on that. Nathan and I spent several phone calls together with GHSA, with their executive director and other leadership, as well as Mr. Mercer. And I have Alliance have taught multiple times and trying to make this something that will be effective for students at Alliance as well as other schools throughout our community. You can see here that this is all the activities that the GHSA is currently offering. And many of these, as we've discussed, are not things that Alliance was built nor that Alliance has the facilities or the ability to offer. However, there are a couple esports and literary that could be offered at Alliance and that Mr. Mercer would like to offer at Alliance, providing that the board supports that. So the proposed design for Alliance moving forward, approve, once you guys review this, if you choose to approve it, allow students to participate in GHSA sanctioned sports and events at their base school that can't be offered at Alliance, beginning with the 25, 26 school year. This would include literary and esports, as I just mentioned. It is worth noting for full clarity that students who participate in GHSA literary or GHSA esports at Alliance will not be eligible to participate in any other GHSA sports or events, student organizations, or other activities at their base school. Per that bylaw that I referenced, students are only allowed to participate in one GHSA school at a time. So if, and it has to be in events that aren't offered at the school that they're attending, the specialty school that they're attending. So for an example, if students are at Alliance and want to go to a base school to play a GHSA event or activity that are besides esports and literary, per that bylaw, they could do that. However, they couldn't go do those things because they are offered at Alliance. That's, that's the clarity on that. In return, if they choose to stay at Alliance to participate in esports or literary, they can't go to their base school to participate in another GHSA event or activity. And that's just how that bylaw works. So I'll take any questions on that in, in a moment or now if you prefer, but that's, that's how that is designed per the GHSA.
I just want to, I want to make sure that I understand this correct too, Dr. Low. So if a, just hypothetically, if you have a student at Alliance who goes back to their base school of West to play football, they've established GHSA eligibility with West. So they would not be allowed to compete in those two GHSA sports that Alliance has because their eligibility is with West. So that would say then they could not do literary or they could not do esports back at, at Alliance. Is that correct?
Correct. And they also could not do those two activities at West.
So in other words, okay, yeah. Okay. And the, and the reason they cannot participate in, if they played football at West, the reason they can't play esports or literary at West is because those are already offered at Alliance?
Correct.
So they would have to make a choice? Is that what you're?
They would have to choose to participate in the other activities or, or if they want to do those two, they'll need to stay. They'll need, they'll need to stay at Alliance to do it and not participate in the other sports.
I just repeat and clarify that just because I think that's very important, that in the messaging that goes out from, from Alliance, that, that people have clarity on that upfront.
Yes, sir. Additional considerations for a proposed design would include that students and parents are responsible to communicate with the GHSA base school that they are traditionally zoned to attend if they desire to participate in any GHSA sanctioned athletics or events that are not offered at Alliance. So that's anything besides literary or esports. It's very important we pay attention to the phrasing, traditionally zoned to attend. An Alliance kid could not, if they're supposed to be at West, they couldn't say, I want to go play baseball at North. It's only the school they are traditionally zoned to attend. With that said, burden on the students and parents to communicate that and I would, Mr. Turner would work with Mr. Mercer to be sure that the Alliance faculty, or pardon me, that Alliance students could be provided the name of the contact information, but there's no way for the base school to know who is or isn't interested. So if they're interested, they should reach out to the AD at their base school. And once again, we would work to ensure they were provided that name and contact information. Additionally, all Alliance documents, communication efforts moving forward should be updated to share this procedural adjustment. And with the 25, 26 lottery already occurring and the last year's 24 out of district window, it is my proposed, my proposal that any procedural changes should apply to students who are already admitted for next school year. There's really no way to reopen that can of worms with the students already have been accepted for next school year and the lottery already being closed. In addition to those points, students and parents will need to provide their own transportation if it is needed outside of the existing bus pickup drop off time at the base school. As we discussed last week, the buses do run from Alliance to the base schools and vice versa at set times. If that bus will return in time for practice or the game, they certainly can ride it. But if, if there's extra accommodations required for a practice that perhaps is in the morning and there's not a bus that's working in that window, or if it's, we're leaving early for a game that's outside of when the buses are already running, they'll need to provide their own transportation. Eligibility, the base school athletic director will be charged to work with Alliance staff to ensure eligibility requirements, which means we'll, we'll work with Mr. Mercer and his team to be sure that grades are provided and so forth with the base school athletic director for any student that chooses to participate because they will be required to meet all eligibility requirements as required by the Georgia High School Association. Attendance and behavior, students are responsible to follow all attendance and behavior procedures. As we discussed last week, there have been concerns about students being perhaps back early or, or not in a monitored zone or things of that nature. It'll be the expectation that the coach on the team relays expectations for students and that they comply with those. If they choose not to comply with those, their, their ability to participate could be revoked, but that really is no different than applies for a student at a base school. If the base school students do not comply with behavioral rules at school or after school hours, their participation is, is, I mean, is the coach's discretion or the, or the principal's discretion. So students will need to comply as expected as any other student athlete would. Assignment, students are responsible for any assignments missed due to their participation or if they're leaving early or, or whatnot, the student is responsible to work with their teacher to make up that work. And once again, that is consistent with the expectation at base schools currently for student athletes or, or any other kids in, in GHSA activities. With that said, that, that is my, the proposal that Mr. Young's asked me to provide and I'm happy to take any questions.
I have one more question about the base school sports and then AAI. I don't remember what slide it was on. So if a student is, is attending AAI, they go to West to play baseball. Are they still eligible to participate in CTSOs and any other organizations at Alliance?
Yes, they would still be allowed to participate as any student at Alliance with career tech organizations, clubs, any other group or team or anything that is school-based, but they would not be allowed to participate in GHSA events at Alliance.
Okay.
As the GHSA rule only applies to GHSA activities.
Dr. Low, if we move forward with this proposal and Alliance does, you know, have teams that are GHSA sanctioned, does that mean that now because it's GHSA sanctioned, we would have to designate an athletic director for Alliance?
We would need to work with Mr. Hershey to determine some type of staffing for an athletic coordinator or director at that school that would be responsible for the eligibility of the kids that do esports or literary. Now, I would propose personally based off of numbers, many of the base school ADs are dealing with literally hundreds of student athletes and just by design. I mean, there was an esports team recognized here tonight. I think there were four or five kids. And literaries often got smaller numbers than some of the larger sports teams may. So I don't know that it would need to necessarily be the exact model that's done at base schools, but we would need to work to determine staffing that's, that meets those requirements. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So this is not, not a traditional sort of thing that we would vote on a policy. This is really a procedural, but I felt like it was really important for, for Dr. Low to present to you what these changes are because obviously this is very, very much on the minds of the public and, and as we've discussed here two meetings in a row. So I, I think what we would just ask for is just a, perhaps a vote of support to move forward with Dr. Low's proposal unless you have some things you want to table, if there's questions that still need to be answered.
I just want to repeat back to you my understanding and you tell me if I've got it right to kind of simplify this for the public. Should the board support this proposed change, students accepted into Alliance next year can participate in GSHA sanctioned sports at their base school with the exception of literary and esports because that will be offered at Alliance?
That is, yes, sir, that is the proposal. Mr.?
If they, I just want to add, if they participate at Alliance in literary and esports, they cannot participate at any, any other sanctioned event, GHSA sanctioned event at their base school.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So do we want to make the motion to approve?
I'm comfortable with it. Moving forward, everybody is?
So we'll make a motion to approve the guidelines provided by Dr. Low. Low, so just need a second, then we'll have a discussion.
All right, so Mr. McCall has made a motion to, for the board to adopt the recommended changes by Dr. Low. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we'll open the floor for discussion.
Go ahead, Doran.
So what if there are activities that we see a groundswell of participants in that is not a GSHA, uh, GHSA sanctioned?
Well, I think one of the things you can explain, like one of the things that we looked at was that a lot of those are curricular based, so they have to take a class also. And they're not offered those classes at Alliance right now. You know, I think one of the things is when you look at this is that when this school was designed, they used community input, they had stakeholders and it was very successful. And a lot of this was not available at that time. And so over the years, it's become available with GHSA addressing it with their rule change. And I think that, just kudos to this board and to, to Dr. Low and Dr. Young and all them and, and the school system of listening to the community, right? This is a huge step for this school. And so taking steps of, hey, let's implement this here now because the GHSA allows that, then I think it allows opportunity down the road to look at other things as they come, just in my opinion. And so I think this is a huge step with just following the GHSA guidelines.
For me, I think it's kind of a, a little bit of a no-brainer because we know that we're dealing with a fundamentally different situation with our young people in terms of their social, emotional, mental health right now. And providing them outlets like sports is, you know, fact that it's good for them, helps build community and connection. So as many as would want to take advantage of this, I think it's, it's a good thing for them. There'll probably be some hiccups should it be adopted along the way, but we'll, we'll work through those. But I think it's a, a different time and it's time for another perspective. Anything else?
All right, with that, I will call for the, for the vote, all in favor. Unanimous. All right.
Thank you.
Next up is point of information, points of information. Has everybody received their information? Anything new or any discussion? All right, we have a short recess on the agenda. I don't think we need it. We'll just go right into public participation. And first up is Mr. Jared Crishell, who is a veteran here and knows the rules very well.
Thank you. Since its creation in 1979 under President Jimmy Carter, the Department of Education promised to elevate American schooling, centralizing federal oversight to boost outcomes. It was fueled by a belief that more federal control would fix declining test scores and inequities. But nearly five decades later, the evidence shows it's fallen short. Before its founding, US students topped global rankings. Today, we lag behind nations like Finland and Singapore in math and reading, all despite a DOE budget that ballooned from 14 billion in 1980 to over 80 billion today. In one case, the School Improvement Grant Program invested 7 billion in low-performing schools starting in 2010 and failed to show any difference between low-performing schools that did get those funds and those that did not. For decades, the Department of Education has become a political tool rather than an engine of learning. After 45 years, it is clear, more federal control hasn't meant better education. While Georgia overall gets around 16% of their K-12 funding from federal sources, Forsyth County is less than half of that. Much of the credit for this financial independence goes to the Forsyth County School Board. The results of their focus on efficiency have meant that we're ranked with the highest academic quality districts and we're ranked with the lowest per pupil spending districts. We reliably get more for less. If there was any example of a school district that proves that local control is superior to federal control, Forsyth County is the poster child. We are incredible stewards of valuable taxpayer dollars and have built a school system that generates superior outcomes. As the Trump administration begins the process of dismantling the Federal Department of Education, we can look forward to less intervention from DC and more money kept in our states and our counties. No longer will we have to worry about funding being denied because a federal administration wants to redefine male and female, as was threatened just last May by the Biden administration. In preparation for the eventual shutdown of the DOE, Trump has already implemented a massive headcount reduction, eliminating wasteful spending. The staffing levels required to disperse block grants back to the states will be orders of magnitude less than current outlays, offering all federal taxpayers significant savings. I would humbly ask the board to spend some time planning for the coming impacts of the elimination of the DOE. We should be engaging our federal and state lawmakers to push for legislation that will transform DOE budgets into block grants. If we have staff currently in place solely because of federal mandates, let's work on finding them better work to do at the local and state level. Georgia has already made great strides to enhance and empower local control and we should make ourselves ready for the additional opportunities as this trend continues. So on that note, thank you very much and I would love to buy lunch for anyone who disagrees with me.
All right, that brings us to the end.
All right, that brings us to the end of the show, guys. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I get motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mr. McCall, in favor. Unanimous. I'm gonna vote no one day, just to see what happens.